Like thirty, thirty-eight and climbing, okay? All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Texas State Board of Examiners of Psychologists Town Hall webinar. My name is Diane Moore and I'm the Executive Assistant for the Agency. And today, the purpose of this meeting is to obtain feedback on the proposed rules for 463.30 and 463.31, which pertains to the examination required for licensure and the minimum passing score for examination. Today, our panelists will be composed of four board members. We have Dr. Susan Fletcher, Dr. Ronald Palomares, Dr. Tim Braneman, and Mr. John Balamowitz. Okay? So, right now, I'll turn it over to our board members to give a brief presentation regarding the E triple P part two examination.
First, I want to start by saying we appreciate you all being here. We've seen a good number of individuals showing up for this to hear and to make comments. And so, thank you for being here. I wasn't sure whether I was going to be able to attend today, so I'll be turning it over to our Vice Chair for the Board, Dr. Ron Palomeres, and he will lead us through this. Again, thank you all for being here today. Dr. Palomeres, you want to introduce yourself and move forward with what you have in mind?
Well, good morning, everyone, and again, thank you for being here. We are excited to have this opportunity to hear your comments and provide some information about where the board is coming from as it relates to addressing the E triple P part two. I'm Dr. Ron Palomeres. I'm a licensed psychologist and a licensed specialist in school psychology. I'm based in Dallas, and I'm the Vice Chair on the Board. And then, we have two others. I will turn it over to Dr. Fletcher.
I'm Dr. Susan Fletcher, and I'm also a licensed psychologist on the Board. I'm also an LSSP, and I'm based out of the Frisco area.
And I am John Balamowitz. I'm one of the public members on the Board. I'm a commercial real estate broker by trade, and actually, today, I'm at our production facility. We are, yesterday, we certified an N95 respirator, so as you can imagine, things are busy around here, so maybe some background noise. But happy to hear the comments today and happy to provide the perspective of one of the public members who is not in the industry.
Right, Diane, we have a PowerPoint slide that will kind of help lead us through the presentation today and allow for the feedback and the comments from the public, if you wouldn't mind sharing that with us?
Sure.
Well, no, if you would like to go back and move it to the beginning with your opening.
Oh, sure. No problem. So, the agenda for today, we're going to welcome, regard, welcome, everyone. Opening remarks, public perspective, address questions from submitted responses, and then we'll allow public comments, which will be limited to three minutes per individual, and then we'll have a question and answer section toward the end, and then our closing remarks. And I am Diane Moore, the Executive Director for the State Board of Examiners of Psychologists. These are our panelists, as introduced earlier. And pretty much, we're just going to go over the rules required for licensure. And originally, it's the E triple P exam, and the Board is looking to adopt the part two. We have brief history and why we're supporting the E triple P part two, and then we'll give you links to the ASPPP resources that's available, if you are not already familiar with those sites.
All right, thank you. So, what I'd like to start off with is really, the focus for this town hall today is really talking about the conversation and soliciting your feedback from the public and from licensees on your thoughts and views for the Board as we move forward with this adoption of the E triple P part two, the competency component of the E triple P. So, with that, what I'd like to do is start off with, again, kind of reminding everyone that the Texas State Board of Examiners of Psychologists, our primary mission, or our mission is protecting the public, is ensuring that individuals who are licensed are licensed with competencies and the knowledge necessary to engage in the services that each of the three licenses, scope of practice falls under each of those three licenses, the LP, the LPA, and the LSSP. And so, that critical component of protecting the public is really looking at the competencies and evaluating and ensure that all licensees, when they're granted that license, that initial start off, is that they're competent to provide the services that fall into that scope of practice for that individual license. We also understand that it's the role of the university training programs who are there to provide that preparation and to graduate the individuals. And so, a lot of the things that, a lot of the comments that we hear and the components that are presented to us is looking at that aspect of competency as it's being evaluated through your training programs, both in practicum and at internship, and then also postdoc level. And we understand that all applicants for the licenses have gone through those various trainings and have those components from their training programs. But more than that, training programs vary in how those programs, how their practicums, how their internships are set up. It is not a requirement that all graduates, for the doctoral level, the licensed psychologist must graduate from an APA-accredited program and an APA-accredited internship. We also have equivalency, and so, that does allow for a broader range of applicants, that they're not constrained to just being those from APA-accredited programs, which have very strict standards and requirements for graduate, or for passing courses and for evaluating competency. See, that other program applicants, programs from other, let me start thinking, applicants from other programs that are not APA-accredited also apply and are accepted for licensure. And so, again, we acknowledge that a role of training programs is developing, doesn't set it up, but that's the ultimate level. So, again, it really is our mission and our role and responsibility from the Board side to ensure that everyone has this minimum level of competence to practice, and that's the protection of the public. If you can get our next slide, thank you. So, just briefly, just providing you that historical component. We first, the Board first required the, an oral exam, a measure of competency, starting in 1989, and that was in addition to the knowledge that is being evaluated by the E triple P part one, or at that point, it's just the E triple P. It was, and so, we've had the oral exam since 1989 up until 2017, when, due to circumstances on the resources, the budgeting, and the location, the logistics for the oral exam made it unfeasible that we could, we could not continue with it at that point. And so, in 2017, the Board did approve the termination for the oral exam, but during that conversation, and part of that whole thing was, if we had an alternative measure to evaluate competency, the Board would seek that out and would move towards using that in a way to replace the oral exam, since that's not a feasible process for us here in Texas to continue to do. So, even though we eliminated the oral exam, it wasn't because we were concerned about the validity of it or complaints about it, it was really focused on a number of other issues, that related to, one, the logistics of having the location and having a number of licensees engaged in that oral exam process, as well as the cost. When we lost the facility that we had been using, evaluating alternative locations, and with the Board budget that the Board has, it just wasn't feasible. We could not cover the cost to do that, and we did not see that that was critical enough to have a large jump in licensing fees to help cover that cost. And so, that, those were some of the factors that went in. But again, the Board members all talked about this being an important component and a role of our Board is to evaluate competency and always have an eye out for measures, to be able, to find a measure that could measure competency following that termination of the oral exam here in Texas. And so, recently, the Board has adopted this movement to accept the E triple P part two as that missing competency measure, and really, again, seeing it as this is part of our mission or our role in protecting the public. And so, we've moved to accept it, but at this point, we want to seek your stakeholder comments and feedback and input prior to us moving this forward further. We want to really hear from the field, hear from the public on what your concerns are, what your issues are with it, what your support is for it as well. And so, that's why we're here today. So, looking at it specifically, what are we looking to change? What is our proposal here? And so, going directly into the rules, you can see, under Rule 46, 463.30, examinations required for licensure, it's that last paragraph where you see the underlying part. And so, what we're looking to change is this requirement for licensed psychological associates and for licensed psychologists to pass the E triple P, both part one and part two, underlying there, prior to the Council granting the license. An applicant who has taken the E triple P part one or part two in the past or in another jurisdiction would not be required to take that part of the exam, provided the applicant's scores satisfy some minimum scores that are set. So, it's adding that component of part two within the language that's already there now. In addition, we have Rule 463.31, the minimum passing scores for examinations. And here, we're looking at having that change to the E triple P part one is, will remain the same as a minimum passing score of 500, and then adding the second, that last sentence where it says the minimal acceptable score for the examination of the professional practice in psychology, E triple P part two, will also be 500, which has been set as the minimum passing score by the test developers. And before we move to public comments, what I'd like to do is turn this over to our public member on the Board, Mr. Balamowitz, to have him provide some comments from the public side and as a representative on the Board of the public. We really think it's important that we hear from him and those that he represents. So, I'll turn it over to you.
I appreciate it, Dr. Palomeres. I'm going to be pretty brief here. The point, I guess, of a public member is that the idea is that the industry sees their own industry very differently from those who are not in it. I'm licensed by the Real Estate Commission, and my perspective of real estate is obviously very different than that of the public. And the idea is, is that we shouldn't necessarily be regulating ourselves. So, you've seen a shift towards public members, and even the BHAC Board has shifted to be a majority public member Board, but again, the, this Board is still a minority public member Board. And really, I think it comes down to perspective, and we, a lot of times, when we say that I have a different perspective, we're saying that I see something different, or I'm coming to a different conclusion. And I think the biggest difference with a public member versus professional members is that it's not that we necessarily see something different, we definitely see it from a different angle. And I think this is no different. When I'm looking at this, it is, it is another step in level of licensure of filtering or another hurdle that we're asking an applicant to clear. You know, there's a lot of questions about the data and how, is this the right way to go? And what was the other thing I wanted to talk about? Oh, the biggest thing, and we've already heard about it, is making sure that we have the best, most qualified people providing mental health services in Texas to the people of Texas. That's the ultimate goal here. And we've seen a lot of public comment on this, and it makes all of us better. And we've seen that in a lot of the processes and things that this Board has been tackling lately. And so, the engagement from the, from the, from the practice of psychology is incredibly valuable, especially to the public members, because I don't do mental health every day. I try to keep my own mental health on a, on a even keel as best I can, but that's my experience with it, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate, as a public member, the input of the industry and y'all's perspective. And in your public, in the comments that I've read, y'all are pretty plain spoken about it, and it's easy for me to understand, and keep that stuff coming, because that's, that's the best way to get to me. So, and the last thing I will say is, is that we are, we have started this process. By no stretch is the cake baked, and we're going to, we're going to tackle all of this together, and I'm looking forward to the back and forth. Usually, we don't get to have this kind of dialogue in our Board meetings with the public, and so, in this forum, I greatly appreciate the back and forth that we're about to have.
Thank you very much. What I'd like to do now, before we move into allowing those that are on the call or here today with us, what I'd like to do first is go through some of the submitted comments that we have already received. These are written comments that have been submitted, and what I've done is, I've taken them, and I've actually put them into three groupings. We have them, those comments that really focus on cost. We have comments that are focused on the data and test development. We have costs, we have comments that are related to training, and then we have just some miscellaneous comments that didn't really fit into any single one category. So, what I'd like to do is go through each of those to share with my fellow Board members here, as well as for the, for those that are on the call with us today or in the town hall, to hear what's already been submitted to us that we have in writing at this time. So, under cost, well, first, we have one comment that just says they're against the rule. And then, under cost, we have one that, as it stands now, in order to get licensed, it requires a significant amount of money, it's a great burden upon people, and this would cause candidates to go deeper into debt. The second comment, that it adds an additional undue cost, time and burden with no proven A third one is, from the financial standpoint, it would result in an undue burden for early career professionals. We have one that just addressed the cost and time to take the E triple P part two. And then, we had, the last one was added significant time, cost, and burden to applicants to furthering, increasing the barriers. So, those are the comments related to cost. Under the data or test development, we had several similar comments that came in, and they had the same, they're basically the same comment from different individuals, from three different individuals, but the point from those was that there was no data to suggest it adds value, validity, or consumer protection. Clinical skills are assessed consistently and continually through practica, internships in the long year full internship. Another comment was not supported by data suggesting the necessity for protecting the public. Tests should not be used prior to establishing validity and reliability. The current version of the E triple P is incredibly poor measure of what makes a competent and ethical psychologist. They should revise the current E triple P, not add to it. And then, one with questions, how is the test invalidated, validated, and what are the citations? In training, we have several comments there as well. Competence is important and necessary for safe practice of psychology. There are several gatekeepers throughout the course of education and training. Another one is measures of competency skilled by future practitioners in psychology are completed by programs of training through practicums and internships, in addition to other exams of those institutions. A third one is that they're already supervised in internship. The fourth is passing the E triple P, and my postdoc supervision, along with years of practicum and internship supervision, should be more than enough to assess the quality of my competency. And then, the last one is current requirements, an accredited psychology, doctoral psychology program, a predoctoral accredited, predoctoral internship, and postdoc supervision should be deemed adequate enough to assess competency, basic skills, and they're unclear how a computer test, a computer-based test can do that. And then, within our miscellaneous, had a question about how does it impact reciprocity if it's already passed in the original jurisdiction? Testing centers were closed during COVID. There's a comment about a money, that it's a moneymaker for the test company. It also adds burden to staff to process. It's already difficult to be licensed, suggested paper, E triple P and jurisprudence exams. And how does it impact reciprocity if it's already been passed originally? I have that twice, okay? And then, the last one, we have a comment that's supportive of the change. They wrote, it ensures that psychologists practicing independently in Texas have the necessary, necessary skills to do so. It helps ensure we protect our fellow Texan citizens from malpractice and potential harm. The removal of the oral exam and only requiring a basic level knowledge-based test is a disservice to Texans. And practicing as a mental health provider requires skills that should be demonstrated in practice through the E triple P part two and evaluated in a standardized, uniform way for all those aspiring to practice independently. So, that's a summary of the submitted comments that we've received at this point, and also would like to encourage you to, not only from your comments today, but if you'd like to submit written comments to the Board, that we have a link later on, on the PowerPoint that we'll put up, where you can submit those comments as well, and those will be prepared and submitted to the Board for all the Board members, not just the, those that are present today, to review at our upcoming Board meeting on November 17th, I believe it is. So, at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Diane. I know we have, and we'll open it up for public comment.
Sure. Anyone that would like to give a public comment, just need to raise your hand. We will handle the phone call comments last. So, if you do have a comment, please raise your hand, and we'll get you. Julia?
Hello. Thank you for holding the town meeting, and my quick question is, it seems to me, sometimes in remote areas, we have difficulty getting coverage for the people that need help. So, I knew someone traveling from Del Rio all the way to San Antonio for a psychiatrist, for example. Now, is there any way that a remote area could interact with the Board in order to allow more people to practice who do not pass this exam? I know other people have questions about the exam itself, but I'm just wondering about the social benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next comment, Jennifer?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, my name is Jennifer Callahan, and I'm representing myself, but in addition to that, the nine colleagues on faculty at the University of North Texas and the Clinical Psychology Doctoral Program, and our 48 current students. Just to let you know why they selected me, I'm a Board Certified Psychologist, and I've had that designation for 15 years. I'm President of the APA Division 29, which is the Society for the Advancement of Psychotherapy. I'm a current Editor-in-Chief for the Journal of Psychotherapy Integration and Associate Editor for Training and Education in Professional Psychology, which is also published by APA. I'm a Board Member on the Council of University Directors of Clinical Psychology, the Professor and Director of the Clinical Psychology Program at UNT, the Director of the Evidence-Based Training and Competencies Research Lab, which leads the nation in publications on the science of training, and have been recently co-named as the Co-Director of the Center for Psychology Health Disparities Research at UNT. I want to just take a moment to thank the Board for its devotion to the protection of the public, and also to tell you how much I appreciate your taking specific time to talk about the role of accredited programs in sharing that vision and executing that mission. It's very much appreciated. Now, having said that, I am going to focus on just one thing in my three minutes, because it wasn't mentioned in the comments, and that's the primary reason why we are all opposed to this rule change. We are strongly in favor of competency-based evaluation, but we do not believe this is it. If anything, we believe it's a step back from the oral examination. The reason why we think that is because the, the current E triple P is known to have very strong rational, ethnic, and linguistic biases that are creating constriction of diversity in our training-to-workforce pipeline. This is not a matter of opinion, it's a matter of clear fact drawn from large jurisdictions in which they have the full population of data available for all test takers. This is a huge issue for us in Texas, and this is where protection of the public comes into play. So, while we agree with all the statements that were made about cost to students and burden on early career professionals and the concerns around the psychometrics of the exams, it's the protection of the public piece that I want to focus on. In the state of Texas, I'm located in the metroplex. The metroplex has been identified already as a federally designated hotspot for racial and ethnic disparities in access to mental care. We are the fourth and fastest-growing area in the United States and the largest within Texas. Yet, this lacks us, this lack of access to care is a huge driver of inequities in mental health care for individuals in this area. If you happen to speak Spanish as your only language, and you know you are in need of services, you will wait an average of 11 years for treatment. We know that individuals who come from diverse backgrounds are much more likely to work in shortage areas and with medically underserved populations. In the state of Texas, where 80% of our counties are federally designated as mental health professional shortage areas, and there's a severe shortage of psychologists in particular, as demonstrated by APA's own workforce data, this is a huge issue for us. We do not want to see part two or part one moving forward when we know that it's harming our ability to populate the public with linguistically competent and culturally sensitive providers. We very definitely view what's happening to be on par with the vaccine developments we hear about with COVID-19. There is data to suggest there needs to be pause in moving forward, and there may even be sufficient data to suggest a full stop and redirection. We strongly urge the Board to retract this proposal. Thank you.
Mr. Stewart?
Yeah, hey, guys. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Kevin with TPA. You know, I think when this sort of all started and we began these discussions, you know, I really appreciate meeting with you, Tim, and having these discussions with you as well, Ron. I think TPA was sort of of the position that, let's wait and see what happens, you know, we don't want to kind of be the guinea pigs here and then have everything sort of roll back. Five or six states have adopted this, so we just didn't want to see a disruption if this test wasn't going to be something that's broadly adopted. So, we were sort of on the, I would say, on the fence is where we were. And then, we got to meet with Dr. Callahan. She has some very serious concerns, which I think are legitimate, and even if they, you know, ultimately, you know, I think at this point, you know, we just need to see some, some research. We tried to talk to the ASPPP, we tried to request data from them, and, you know, they basically just put up their walls. Wouldn't allow any transparency, they wouldn't provide any information that we could, on the, on the original E triple P that we could use to sort of verify what they've been telling us, that there's not going to be any discriminatory impact based on this exam. So, I think that kind of pushed us a little bit farther into that position where, you know, I mean, that's, that's a major red flag, and I think as Board members, that is a major red flag too, you know? If they're willing to release some of that data and, you know, let, let third parties review it, what's gone on in other states, and then what's gone on with E triple P one in this state, I think TPA could get to a point, you know, assuming that everything looks fair, I think they could get to a point where they're more comfortable with it, but at this point, that's just a major red flag. There's some serious concerns about transparency there, and I think it gives more legitimacy to Dr. Callahan's arguments that this really is a problem, because, you know, if I was ASPP P. There's some serious concerns about transparency there. I think it gives more legitimacy to Dr. Callahan's arguments that this really is a problem. Because if I was ASPB, my data looked great and I had nothing to hide. I would just go ahead and put that out there. But they've been, they had their attorneys contact TPA and tell us exactly why they're not sharing that data. So it's just, I don't know. I think it's a little frustrating. I think it's, it's very concerning. I think, I don't know if y'all got to watch the meeting yesterday that happened with the issues with the social work board. But I think there's.
Mr. Stewart.
I just think there are some serious concerns of what's going on, on the BHEC level and on member board level. I would hate to.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Ms. Melanie. Would you, can you unmute yourself?
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Dr. Melanie Lemansky. I hold a PhD in developmental psychology and I was recertified as a school psychologist. I have been in practice as a licensed specialist in school psychology for almost 15 years. I'm sorry, this is emotional for me. I have moved into training now in academia, future school psychologist at the specialist level. And so I'm speaking both at that professional and a personal level. When I train my students about assessment, about making decisions, one of the things that I always emphasize is not making decisions on single points of data. And I feel like this board has continued to make licensure decisions based on single points of data being the E triple P. My experience with trying to become a licensed psychologist is that despite my training, despite my practice of nearly 15 years, because I can't get a 500 on this test, I can't practice if I set foot outside of a school setting. And now you're going to set another barrier for people of color, people of linguistic diversity, people of lower socioeconomic status. You're going to put another barrier. We know that there is a huge deficit of practitioners. We know that there is not enough people of color in the field, that there are not enough people who are linguistically diverse in the field. This test is not the answer to our problem of a single point of data. And I am vehemently opposed to this, adding this barrier to our, our students. People want to help people, and this is another barrier that you're putting in the place of that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comment.
Thanks for the comment.
Hi, can y'all hear me? My name is Dr. Yvonne Estrella. I am a bilingual LSSP currently, and I am in the process of completing the requirements for my licensed psychology license. I'm currently considered a provisional status trainee. To give you some background about myself, I am a first generation Mexican-American in this country. I am a Spanish speaker. That is my native language. My second language was English. Everything that the individuals that have spoken before me, I feel it. It's very personal. It's close to my heart. I have struggled to proceed with my LP licensure because of number one, the cost. I'm just me by myself. $600 is a lot of money for me, especially right now, and I work in the school system. So we don't get increases like teachers do often. We don't get paid as much either, and I work in the schools because that is my passion and that is where I like to help. I like to help our second language learners. I'm also going to tell you something about me. I struggle with testing. I'm actually fearful about the E triple P because the GRE psychology, I took it eight times before I was able to obtain a passing score. And if you quiz me on it, I can tell you everything. I could tell you those chapters, you know, going forward, going backward. I have all the knowledge, but with the testing format, as a culturally and linguistically diverse individual, I struggle with it. I struggle with that testing format. And I have read the articles about the E triple P and the concerns that have been raised based on language loading. And I know that some of you are licensed specialists in school psychology, you're LSSP. So you are very aware of the matrix of the things that you're looking at, you know, when you're considering, is this culturally appropriate? Is this a valid and sound instrument that is unbiased? And unfortunately, I struggle with those things. And that's why I wanted to share a little bit about my background. And again, I am an early career professional and I've struggled to get to this point because financially I do not have what it takes. And I fear, what if I do not pass the first time? Where am I going to get another $600 from? What if I don't pass a second time? Where am I going to get the additional funds for that? And I'm also spending money to prepare myself through different programs, through different trains, and that's additional funds. And then on top of that, we have our student loans. So when you think about it, it's very hard for early career professionals to take on all of this. So I appreciate the time that you've given us to share with you what we go through. I'm a bilingual provider. I'm diverse. I grew up on the border. I want to serve people that have maybe the same needs that I've had, that have the same background as I have had because I can provide that expertise to them. Unfortunately, you know, as others have expressed, this process can be time-consuming. Sometimes we don't have the funding and sometimes we do not, we are not able to pass because of the way, the format of the test.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Julian Frombley.
Hi. Yes, Formby. Hi, thank you. I want to start by thanking the board for, definitely for carrying on the endeavor to look at the issue of competence in licensure in the state of Texas. Sorry about that. Okay, am I good now?
You're echoing.
I know. Sorry. I'm very sorry. I'm a psychologist, but that doesn't make me a technology expert.
You're good now.
I, I, I do thank you all for doing that. And so my interest here is I'm a former oral examiner several times over for the oral exam in Texas and have been licensed in Texas many years. I'm a member of two professional organizations. I'm not representing those organizations. I'm representing myself and my concern about the field of psychology. So as others have stated, my concern is about needing data on the psychometrics, the validity, the reliability of any examination to assess for competence. I still hold firmly that it is a necessary part of licensure. As an oral examiner, I witnessed, there were at least two occasions where there was definite concern and there, the licensee was advised that they had to take the, or the person seeking licensure was advised that they needed to take the exam again. So I witnessed firsthand that there was a screening factor with the in-person oral examination, which I think has validity. It has quote face validity, literal face validity, for a person to be able to stand on their feet figuratively and respond to clinical, I'm a clinical psychologist. So clinical scenarios that were presented to them. So I'm a firm advocate and believer that we must have some measure of competence, not just of a knowledge base for someone entering the field of psychology in the state of Texas for the protection of the public. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you for your comment. Xena Peters.
Yes. Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Good morning and thank you so much for the opportunity to be a part of this webinar. I really want to thank the board this morning for allowing the public to give comment. This is such an honor, I think, in these times to have that opportunity. A little bit about myself, I recently completed postdoc. I'm new to Texas. I'm a first generation college student. I'm Afro-Caribbean, African-American, and I'm very excited to be a part of this field, especially in the times that we're experiencing right now in the United States. A couple of things I wanted to point out that is a concern with adding the E triple P two to the current licensure process here is that, one, I don't know enough about what has come out of the beta testing. I don't know what the results have shown. You know, as someone who's applying for licensure, I'm concerned if any consideration has been considered with the timing, the cost. You know, we're in the middle of a pandemic. I don't know any clinician who has not experienced some level of stress would just sort of balance in that. And so being a early career, just completed trainee, you know, my priority right now is to get licensed. And so that is another additional stressor. Getting that email a couple of days ago that the E triple P may be something that I would now have to consider. I also wanted to talk about, or encourage the board to consider how racial unrest in the country is a barrier in terms of just an additional stressor for many, many of the applicants here in, in Texas. And I'm glad that you had the presentation this morning. And if I understand it well, it seems like as of 2017, the oral part of the exam was removed due to the circumstances that were listed. And I'm curious to know, is there concern from 2017 to the present of the, is the public now unsafe for those who had only taken the E triple P one? And I asked that question to say that I think the exam is, it's a tough one. It's one that it takes a lot of energy to prepare for. And as I'm preparing for it now, I really would like the board to just consider the number of stressors that individuals are experiencing right now. And on top of that, I feel as a woman of color, I've faced many, many, many racial inequities to get to this point. And so seeing this exam might change, it adds a level of stress. I got emotional here in Dr. Lemansky and also Dr. Callahan and what they're, they were saying. And so I am really against the E triple P two. And so I just wanted to take the time to, one, thank you for this opportunity, but also to just voice my opinion on that possible change. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have one more comment for Megan Mooney.
Good morning. This is Dr. Megan Mooney. It's good to see you all. My name is Dr. Megan Mooney. I'm the current president for the Texas Psychological Association, and I'm here to expand further on some of the comments that Kevin Stewart made earlier. And as you all know, TPA does support additional competency measures. We believe that psychologists are important in the field of mental health in general as we are the doctoral level providers for mental health care. And so we absolutely support rigorous competency standards for entrance to our profession. As you all know, TPA did not support removal of the oral exam originally for that very reason. We believe firmly in needing data to support the use of any new testing that would report to demonstrate competency for our applicants to entrance to the profession. We believe that we need that data to support the use of any new exam, whether it be the E triple P two, a new oral exam, or any other instrument that you all consider. We certainly do have concerns after our conversations with Dr. Callahan and reviewing the research about the possibilities of implicit bias being present in the E triple P one. And those concerns were furthered by the refusal of ASPB to give us that data to demonstrate that there were not concerns to be had. So what I would just ask and what TPA would ask is that you all wait to receive that data about what the E triple P one data looks like in Texas before we move forward with any additional examinations that are published by the same company. And that we would also urge you to wait for research that's not completed by ASPB to truly evaluate more independently the data that would demonstrate that that exam, or any other exam for that matter, would be useful in us determining the competency of licensees in Texas. I so appreciate you all's diligence in considering these requests and the data and the hard work that the members of the board do every day. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your time. We do have another comment. Ms. Olivia Perez.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Olivia Perez and I'm a licensed specialist in school psychology. And I wanted to speak to my experience, just as so many others have already done so. I am a bilingual licensed specialist in school psychology, and I have a bachelor's degree in psychology from Rice University. And then I completed the program for the specialist degree through University of Houston, Clear Lake. And now I practice as a licensed specialist in school psychology. I am currently undergoing the process to obtain the LPA simply because I was never able to complete a doctoral program. And I think that I just want to speak to barriers of entry into the field. I think they are very real. They have definitely impacted me. As a mother of three children and then wanting to go back into the field after taking a hiatus from raising my children, I found that doctoral programs were inaccessible to me. And I, I think that it is what caused me to go into the specialist program. I think as other people have mentioned, I think that we need to be doing everything that we can in this day and age to increase the diversity in our field. I think everyone can agree that we do have a huge problem, especially here in Texas, considering the demographic makeup of the people of the state and inequities in accessing mental health. If we're ever going to make a change towards having more equity, I think that we need to reconsider putting more barriers to entry for people of color to obtain licensure to practice. Thank you.
Thank you. Julia, did you have a comment?
I just had a quick question. The way I read the rules that you propose, if a person already holds the license, they do not go back and take the E triple P two. Is that correct? That's all I have. I pass the E triple P one with a 500 and I hold the LPA. Thank you.
One second here. We have another comment.
Hi, it's Tara Cornado. Again, I spent all day with you guys yesterday. I sent an email. I didn't get an agenda for this meeting, so I didn't know if an agenda was sent out, but I've requested one. And then I won't go through it all again, but I want you to know that there's still a systemic problem with your psychologists and the way they're doing evaluations in family court. And you can scratch your heads on all you want, but it's going to be the same stuff. I mean, it is exactly the same where you've got a few bad apples and I don't feel that you're investigating them. And I don't know how many more national articles need to come out. It's still being reviewed. My, the complaints just sit. There is a two, two, a second income stream, John, that at one point you were interested in. Maybe you're not now, but I'm not going away. I'm not, the issue's not going away. The articles aren't going away. And I just would like this board to do something to find a way to look at the cases that are in front of you that the crux of the issue is domestic violence not being understood by the evaluator. And who paid for the evaluation, where the determination was there was no domestic violence. I've forwarded on that now.
Ms. Cornado.
This is not the topic at hand.
Well, that's why I asked for an agenda. I didn't get one. But I just want you to know that I'm going to attend all of them because. because these issues are not being dealt with, no matter how often I come and speak to you guys. So if someone could email me an agenda, I'll listen till the end. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. We don't have any further public comments? One more just came in. Matthew Chester?
Yeah, how are y'all able to hear me?
Yes.
Who are y'all? I'm Dr. Matthew Chester and I'm a licensed psychologist in Texas. I am a lifelong Texan. I was actually born in Texas. And I appreciate this opportunity to comment about the E triple P two. I'm here representing myself just as an individual. I have significant concerns about the E triple P two and just want to voice my opposition to this being implemented here in the state of Texas for a variety of reasons. There are a number of articles being published currently about the problems with the E triple P two. And I significantly, I seriously hope that the Texas State Board is taking that into consideration. And just as a white man who is interested in racial justice and equity, I'm also very concerned that the E triple P two is being considered for implementation before issues with E triple P one specifically regarding discrimination based on race are not addressed. So I think it would actually behoove this, this board and ASPB at large to consider addressing E triple P one and the problems with that exam specifically regarding race before we ever get to something like E triple P two. The other comment that I wanted to make is about competency and evaluation of competency. I appreciate the protection of the public and want to draw attention that really the, it appears to me that the responsibility of competency and evaluation of that is achieved through seven to eight years of doctoral training, including a pre-doctoral internship as well as a postdoctoral fellowship in which there are many hurdles to actually achieve competency and be determined as such. So if there are concerns about non-APA accredited candidates, then I would suggest maybe a solution to address that particular concern rather than implementing an entire E triple P two for the rest of candidates. So that's my comment for today. Just want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments before we move to the telephone comments? Caller, do you have a public comment? One second. Ms. Willis?
Yes.
Do you have a public comment?
Yes. I just wanted to, my name is Latira Willis. I am a current licensed specialist in school psychology. I just also wanted to address the overwhelming shortage of LSSPs currently within the state of Texas. A summer or two years ago, I worked at, in Colleen, driving from Dallas, Texas to Colleen. That's how severe the shortage is, working with the students on the Fort Hood Air Force Base. So also, I am a current candidate studying for the E triple P, and it is a significant barrier. I'm in several study groups. There's a lot of anxiety, especially in the current condition that we're in as far as COVID-19, you know, studying. They offer practice tests. We're not even able to go in and take those practice tests in order to study for the E triple P because of the testing centers being closed within the area. So I just wanted to also put that out there that we have a significant hindrance to being able to take the test as it is and then to add a second part. That's really overwhelming. And within these study groups, we are really feeling the effects of this. So I would, I'm advocating for not adding the E triple P. And I just wanted to include that information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Paul Ramirez, do you have information with regard to the, really, we had received information recently with regard to the COVID issue and, and the centers? Do you have that at hand or not?
Yes, I, from a meeting two weeks ago with the Association of State of ASPB, the individual who oversees the E triple P, Dr. Matt Turner, said that they're aware that there were some centers, testing centers that have been closed due to the COVID. But as of October, he said that all of them have been opened. Many of them have extended their hours, opening earlier in the day and closing later at night to meet demand and needs. So from what I've heard from this side is that all the centers are open. There is some ability to go into the centers for testing. And again, that's that COVID-related. Haven't heard anything different at this point.
Okay. Thank you. I'm showing that we have additional comments from persons that are already spoken. Can they give additional comments to the panel?
I would like to open it up to those, the callers, anyone that's on the phone to call first. So allowing for first-time commenters and then allowing the others to go back.
Okay. Give me one moment. We have two individuals with a caller. Caller, can you unmute yourself?
We lost Dr. Formby.
One moment. One second. Caller, can you unmute yourself? Do you have a public comment?
No, I do not have a comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, those are their own two, so we'll go back into the, we have some more public comments here.
Could we ask that, we presume that these are additive to what has been previously said as opposed to being reiterated?
John, a reiterate?
I posted a couple things in the comment section, but I'm semi-retired now partly because of a car wreck, being most of my career school psychology-oriented. Like I said, I did follow, I'm first-generation university and I'm half Cajun from Louisiana. It was a very difficult and uncomfortable setting to attend an APA program at Southern Miss that had four levels of specialty because I didn't fit in. I was poor, first-generation university. Luckily, I'm white dominant, so I had the advantage of being that. But, you know, licensed psychologists have to be the epitome of white supremacy thinking. I mean, it is very difficult to get in. There is an upper-class standard. And that needs to be addressed somewhere in the board. Many of us that do do school psychology, we've seen that territory be moved in and taken control over by things we've done our whole life, spent our whole career developing expertise in school management, therapeutic treatment of trauma recovery. But when it starts making money, all of a sudden, everybody wants to supervise us that have been doing this, like I said, for 30-plus years. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanna Frombry? Formby?
Yes, hi, thank you. Yes, yes, this is additive, yes. Point I meant to make previously when I spoke. Understanding that, especially right now during the pandemic, there are limitations to testing. My question and thought is, the oral examination, which was an assessment of competence, was halted in 2017. So is it correct that there is no assessment of competence currently? Or until this issue is resolved with the E triple P two or another examination that proves to be a valid assessment? That's my concern, is that it's going unassessed currently for new licensees. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Olivia Perez and I just wanted to speak to Dr. Paul Ramirez's comment regarding the accessibility of the testing centers. I actually went through the process last night to register for my E triple P. And I can tell you that I'm in Houston and there are, there were presented to me six options within the Houston area, and only two centers were open. However, between now and my deadline for which I have to take the test, which is end of December, I was only able to choose from three testing times, meaning there were only three dates and three time slots out of those centers. And the rest of the centers are closed. So COVID is definitely having an impact on availability of examination. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. That's something that we definitely have to keep an eye on and will watch more closely. I appreciate the update on that.
I just want to, yeah, I just want to speak briefly, not to the last speaker, but the speaker before that, about, I feel like the, that we are continuing to equate competency with passenger passing score on the E triple P one or two. And I disagree completely that that is our sole measure of competency. I think that we need to be looking at our applicants wholly. What are the, what is their training look like? What does their experience in internship like? Many people do two years of internship. Why are we not looking at that information to get a better picture of competency? Why are we relying on a standardized test that we know is problematic? And now we're going to add a second test that is problematic and saying that is competency? I have real problems with that. And that's my comment.
Thank you. So do we have any other participants that would like to make a public comment? They haven't made a comment already. If you do, please raise your hand. Okay, we have some coming.
Hi, good morning. My name is Dr. J.T. Lacy. I'm a licensed psychologist and also a licensed specialist in school psychology. Thank you all for having this forum and allowing us the chance to speak. I just want to briefly state that I also am opposed to the E triple P part two. Many that have spoken before have very, very well stated the reasons why this is not a good idea. From a very practical standpoint, it simply does not make sense to put yet another barrier in place to getting licensed, especially whenever there is such a critical shortage of mental health professionals in Texas. And so again, I am strongly, strongly opposed to the E triple P part two. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Galloway?
Hello. I just wanted to say, I'm an LSSP. I've been one for approximately 10 years. I work in South Texas. I kind of made the decision to join this conference call, knowing very little about the background of it. I got the invitation and had no real, you know, horse in the race, so to speak. But in hearing a lot of the comments, you know, I am curious about the standardization of the evaluation that you guys are talking about implementing to determine somebody's future, really. You know, as LSSPs, we give standardized evaluations all the time, and we understand the importance of validity and statistical significance and, you know, cultural bias. And we look at how hard our test publishers work to ensure that those things are all as they need to be. And so kind of just carrying over our own profession into the standardization that you guys are setting. You know, how is that standardized if it is an oral exam? How are things like people's spirits talking in public, like I'm having right now, taken into consideration? And how are things like second language learners and their ability to access vocabulary going to be taken into consideration? And then I'm also a little confused, and I don't know if a board member can answer this question, but is this something that's already been put in place? Or are our comments influencing whether or not it is going to actually be passed? Thank you.
And just to answer, yeah, just to answer that last question, it is not in place at this point. We are still reviewing, and that's why we're having this town hall. It's not a done deal. We, as board members, really want to listen to the comments and the input as we evaluate this and make a decision as we move forward with it. So no, it's not, it's not completed at this point. So your, our time and your time is not being wasted today and when you submit comments. We are really here to solicit to hear what you, as public members, as licensees, your views on this so we can really carefully consider that as we move, make our determination on how we move forward with this decision or not. So again, thank you all for your questions and your input today.
I just want to echo that. This, the cake is not baked yet. We may have made some cake batter, but the cake, the cake isn't in the oven yet. We're still working on it. So I appreciate all the comment here.
I also want to reiterate the importance of those who cannot attend today, who have already submitted written comments. And I just want to encourage each of you to also encourage your colleagues to do that because we appreciate that it's difficult to schedule time in your schedule. We know it's difficult for us and we're committed to doing it. And so we can only imagine you all are having the similar struggles to be able to dedicate the kind of time that's needed today to attend. And we want you to know we appreciate your attendance. And we also appreciate those who could not attend that provided written comments.
And I would add my agreement with that. I think this was a great opportunity and we got great feedback today.
We have a few more hands that popped up. Brandon Hopefield? Brandon?
Hello. I apologize that my name is listed incorrectly on this. My name is Dr. Levania Bennett. I am a postdoctoral intern currently. My background in education, I come from a scientist practitioner advocate model, which highly emphasizes feminist and multicultural approaches to understanding the self and to psychotherapeutic care. I do want to say first and foremost that I am greatly appreciative of the opportunity that you all are affording us today to express our concerns and gain more information moving forward with the competency or not with the competency process. I want to share a similar concern in regards to the second portion of the E triple P, particularly as it relates to the cultural bias and standardized testing and essentially norming Eurocentric views, which don't allow for equitability and success for the most vulnerable and marginalized populations. And I would be cautious in thinking about, as we move forward, how to address these concerns, that utilizing diverse quote-unquote case examples and things like that aren't sufficient in curbing these Eurocentric marginalizing approaches to assessing competency. And I do think that there has to be some serious consideration for one's social position, particularly whenever it deviates from normative hegemonic positions of power and prestige. from normative hegemonic positions of power and prestige. And that is all I have to say. I thank you all for giving us the opportunity to speak and share our perspectives today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy Hurd.
Good morning. I'm Tracy Hurd. I'm an LPC here in South Texas. And I am also in my second year of the doctoral program. And I just wanted to say thank you all, the board members, for giving us time to even state our opinions on today. And I just want to say, I agree with most of the people that presented themselves about the E triple P. I have not even begun to even think about taking the E triple P first test, and to hear that a second test has been added. And it's quite alarming to me, because I didn't even know that this was going on. So, or something like this would be possibly put in place. And I just want to state, I couldn't imagine taking the two. The one is just enough for me for right now, from hearing all the comments. And/or I'm just sitting here thinking with tears in my eyes of saying, should I just back out of this now? Well, I can't. Knowing that a lot of our people are hurting right now, and there is-
Three minutes, our open is heard.
There is a great need for psychologists. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I would just add to that last comment. Don't give up. Don't give up. You've come too far.
We have a comment from Mr. Varela.
Good morning. This is Dr. Jorge Varela. I'm a clinical psychologist. I am a professor of psychology at San Houston State University, the director of clinical training. And I also happen to sit on the board of the Council of University Directors of Clinical Programs. I have been hearing about the development of the E triple P two, or Enhanced E triple P, for a few years now. And I find that the efforts to develop the test, to establish its validity, have been wholly insufficient. And I want to register my opposition to adopting the E triple P at this point. I don't think that the developers have applied the best techniques that we have for establishing a new measure, a validity measure, especially something that is at least in part going to serve a gatekeeping function into the profession. I hope the board will recognize this and slow down the adoption of the Enhanced E triple P. It's just not ready for prime time quite yet.
Dr. Varela, could you mention what you believe is missing from that?
I think that we need to have better validation of the test. For example, and this is only one of the ways, things like, why don't we have people who are experts? For example, let's just say, board certified psychologists take the exam, and then people who are engineers and see how well they do. Do these scores differ? Why aren't we having, taking some time to establish its connection? You know, the scores and their connection to subsequent indicators of appropriate practice? For example, board complaints. I realize the base rate of those is low, but things like that. I just feel like this has been this kind of headfirst dive into this test, and we're just not there yet. And in my experience, attending meetings of training directors, this opinion is shared by many. And I can tell you that, you know, hell hath no fury than a room full of psychologists or program directors becoming angry about something that they feel is wholly inadequate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Spengst, I don't believe you had the opportunity to introduce yourself when we started. Would you like to do so at this point? I presume everybody knows who you are, but perhaps not.
I'm Daryl Spengs. Was the executive director for the Psychology Board for a long time, until I got stupid and moved up to the council. Now I'm the executive director for the Behavioral Health Executive Council. And I am suit and tie here attending this morning, because I spent all day in a suit and tie yesterday. So I apologize for my shoddy appearance compared to my corporate here.
And in these days, it seems like ages ago that this transition took place, doesn't it?
It does, it does. But all the comments about the oral exam are bringing back- bringing back memories. Oceans.
Any other? Ms. Moore, is there any other?
Yes, we do have one more hand that is raised. I can bring them in now. It's Nancy Wilson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
I'm Nancy Wilson. I'm a licensed psychologist, living in Austin. And I've been a licensed psychologist for more years than I care to report. But in addition to that, I was an oral examiner for many years, until the, I don't remember when I started, but of course, I stopped when the oral exam stopped. And I was also on the oral exam work group. I'm really not totally familiar with the E triple P two, and so I don't want to comment on that. But I do want to comment on the oral exam. And some of this is very impressionistic from my experience. I remember that I think it was an extremely valuable procedure that we had in Texas, which basically kind of looked at all of the people who were taking the oral exam, and looked at their ability to talk intelligibly and competently about psychological cases and how they would approach them and look at it from a number of points of view. And it was looked at by two of us at any one time. I certainly recall examining with a variety of colleagues and examining a very diverse group of applicants, not only racially, but I even recall some people that I would have considered neurodiverse. And I also recall that, at least in the areas that I examined, which were clinical and counseling, that there were certainly times when there was a 10% fail rate. And I think that's significant, that that number of people did not show themselves, at least on that measure, to be ready to be out practicing independently and serving the public. I think, I don't fully understand all the reasons the oral exam went away. I think it was a very good final gatekeeping screen for our profession and for the public. And I think in the decision making that you all are having to do about what to do regarding the E triple P two amongst, in addition to the kinds of things people have already talked about, I think it would really be helpful to recall what the benefits were and the helpfulness was of the oral exam. And-
Your time's up, Ms. Nelson, Ms. Wilson. Your time is up.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to just share a slide with those that are saying they're not familiar with the E triple P part two. They'll give a resource with ASPB website link that you can view there, more information for your viewing. Share it shortly with you here. So ASPB has resources available on the website that will give you an overview of the E triple P part two, and why it was developed. And basically, it's a skill assessment. And we'll speak on the validity of exam and frequent asked questions regarding the E triple P part two. So you might want to jot that down for your future reference. Obviously, this up for a few minutes, so everyone can grab the link there.
And then Ms. Moore, if you wouldn't mind going to the last slide with the information about submitting public comments through the web?
Sure.
And what I'd like to do is take a moment and thank everyone for being here today and participating and listening, and for sharing, and those that shared with us. I've learned a lot, and I know my colleagues have as well, new ways to look at this, more things to discover, more things to learn about it. Specifically, some of the key things that I want to kind of summarize here is a real concern about bias, linguistic and cultural diversity. How are they being addressed? Where is the data for that in the development of this new exam? The E triple P part two. I would like to remind everyone that the E triple P part two is different than the E triple P part one. The part one is a knowledge-based test. It focuses on the knowledge that you have. And it really looks at what you know, and it focuses on knowledge. Whereas the two is a competency exam. And as part of a competency exam, and I know you can go onto the E triple P, the ASPB website, and read more about it. It's designed with some examples and questions about practice itself, key things that go into case notes and things. So it is a different exam than a strict knowledge exam. It really is looking at competency, and that's how it's been designed. I know there's been this request for data on the E triple P part two. And we know that it's being developed. And again, I think that's something, as it's moving forward, I know their beta testing had been postponed because of the, because some of the issues that have been raised previously last year around this time with diversity and other issues, as well as with the pandemic that struck everyone beginning earlier this year. And so my understanding is that they're doing their beta testings beginning the first of November, and there will be participants at that point. So they're gathering more data. Please, I would like for you all to understand that this is not, it's not done. It's not in effect now here in Texas. We are working on it to make that determination of whether it moves forward or not. So we are really soliciting your comments. So those of you that are in that pipeline right now, especially those that spoke that are in your postdoc year or coming up on your internship year, and concerned, do I have to take the E triple P one and two right now? At this point, the E triple P part two is not a requirement for application for licensure in Texas for LPAs and for licensed psychologists. So again, it's not there yet. I'm not sure if it will be or if it won't be. And finally, I really encourage you all to go back to the ASPB website and read that, as well as if you would like. Dr. Callahan and colleagues have an article in The American Psychologist. I believe it was published earlier this year that raises their issues that they see around the exam itself. And I understand that there's a commentary that ASPB, I mean, yes, there's a response, a comment from ASPB that will be published in The American Psychologist. I believe they said it's scheduled for publication in January. So it's not out there yet, but they will have a comment to the Callahan article and showing, talking about their side of how they see the issues with it. So again, there's information that's out there, more information coming. And it's definitely a requirement that we, as board members, look at all of that information and look at the data as it develops and comes from the E triple P part two as it's moving forward, before we make that decision to move this forward. So with that, I'm going to turn to my colleagues. Do any of you have a comment that you would like to make as we close up this town hall today?
I think that we've had a good overview and a terrific response from the public. I'm pleased to see how responsive it's been. Believe that we probably have a Mr. Valavich from a public member's point of view. Any comments that you have to make?
Not at this time. I'm sorry, I just wait for two seconds there, but I'm good for right now.
Okay. I would just add that I want to make sure everybody knows how much we appreciate the fact that the people who spoke today were at different stages of their professional career. And that's very valuable, I think, to the board, to hear what it looks like as a student, what it looks like as somebody who's about ready to complete everything towards licensure, people newly licensed in a variety of settings, especially the LSSPs. We hear you when you talk about the shortages. As an LSSP, I get those emails about all the openings that are available in the state of Texas. So I want you to know, we appreciate that. We also appreciate the knowledge base of people from TPA, as well as Dr. Callahan and others who have been a part of the profession for many years, supervised others, are part of educational programs. That diversity is noted today in the town hall of the people that were here. And I want you to know that that's very valuable to us, and how much we appreciate your input from your perspectives.
We do have one more comment. Would you like to take the poll comment?
One more.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, so my name is Dr. Gomans, and I am a licensed psychologist and licensed specialist in school psychology. And one of the things that I want to briefly discuss, somebody had already commented on it about the association between someone's performance on a standardized assessment and competency, right? And the belief that one's performance is going to be indicative of their ability to properly engage in competent practice and so forth. So one of the things that I was just typing right now, and I was noticed, I noticed that I was unmuted, is that usually competency is embedded in graduate programs through ongoing student evaluations by professors and by supervisors, things of that nature. And one of the things I wanted to mention is that that in itself covers, and could assume to cover, one's competency as they're constantly being assessed in terms of their abilities to complete assessments appropriately, their abilities to provide services adequately, things of that nature. And that in itself would, I would say, cover some of those competence, those measures. So, yeah, I just wanted to mention that. And I really do appreciate your time and all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are not others, are we at a point, we may bring this to a close?
Yes, I believe so. There are no further comments? Questions provided? I believe they're all answered.
Well, then I would like to go ahead and let us close up the meeting and thank everyone, the board members that are here, Dr. Spengs, Mr. Spengs, and Ms. Moore for your participation, and everyone that joined us, especially the speakers taking that time to speak with us and share your views, as well as all those that were sitting in on the meeting, the town hall today. Thank you, and wishing you all a wonderful afternoon.
Thank you to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you to the public as well. Very well reasoned and thoughtful comments. We appreciate it.
I just want to add, thank you for what's written in the question and answer box, too, that is available for us. So those are seen. So we do appreciate that.
You're here.